He just created a, created a business and claimed he had a hundred some jobs at 1.5.
I don't even, yeah. Yeah. Besides wrestling, wrestling.
But you'll let him know.
It's just been a lot of those.
Seriously. You'd have to work at that.
That's a Steve, that's a Steve picture. This is Shannon.
Yeah, that's right.
One minute?
One minute.
Okay. He walked in and it looks like Jared, but Jared's not gonna be here. Yeah.
Oh, times have changed.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Okay.
We're having weenie roast out of the creek.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's a nice little campfire going.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Brad, you better sit down. Hopefully, it's gotta be quick here. I know. Called a meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, roll call, please. Teresa?
Nelson, Orison, Larson?
Here.
Wunschel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Reed?
Balk?
Here.
Okay, item three on the agenda is an Iowa Lakes Corridor update from Shannon Landauer, the president and CEO of the corridor.
Good evening. You should have in front of you a packet that we prepared. It's our most recent annual report along with a request letter. We also had done a case for investment for 2020 through 25, so you're probably familiar with that as well. Just thought we'd kind of update on some of the programs that we've been working with for Spencer specifically in the last months. First of all, I'll start by noting that since I was here last, we do have a new team member. Tom Nelson has joined us to be really taking charge of our small business development and entrepreneurship programming. So he's off to a great start. Again, someone with a history in the Spencer area, so he's excited to be on the team. The first thing that I want to cover is the business retention and expansion programming. We feel like the most significant part of an economic development program is to be working with existing industry, understanding their challenges, helping with potential expansion projects, and really just building those relationships and partnerships. As you can imagine, as we work through business attraction, that's really where we find what our targets are, is working with existing industry and looking at some of those gaps. We completed our Best of Iowa visits last year in 2021. About 30% of those completed were with Spencer businesses, and we look forward to doing that again this year. Unfortunately, we haven't received the state report. Typically, we do a corridor report and then we have state data to compare to. And Iowa Economic Development Authority hasn't released that yet. It really should be any day. So that information will be coming in your updates soon. Again, for 2022, we are working on more of a comprehensive strategy throughout the corridor. Those that we focused on have been industry, and those that we get within the targeted industry sectors for the state, we want to drill down a little bit further, get into some of those smaller businesses, those with growth potential, those that are an important part of supply chain and some of those smaller industries, and certainly those Main Streets as well. So for Spencer specifically, we did meet with the Chamber with Main Street, and we've talked a little bit about it with Phil at SEDC to prepare that, make sure that there's a comprehensive strategy that's creating more touch points. We don't have to have formal interview visits every time, but making sure that we're getting out and knowing that the businesses know who they have as a resource team is really important. The next item is on the attraction side. Like I mentioned before, a lot of the business attraction and growth comes from those existing industries and the context that we're making, but we have worked on a few pieces to make us a little bit more competitive as well. First of all, I want to mention the lowest system. As you guys know, if we don't have a product to sell, we can't go to market. So we're trying to make sure that we have a very good updated comprehensive list of those sites and buildings that are available, and then we can do some evaluation on what's missing. We have definitely seen more traffic, mostly all building specific versus sites, given the conditions of the industry right now. We also are working on our Gazelle system. It's a software that we invest in that gives intelligence on companies looking to grow and expand. So not only can we go in and look for companies to fill buildings that we have available, we also can see some supply chain pieces. We start to focus on NAICS code and see where some of those gaps are. So again, we've been working through that, using them very specifically to fill a couple of our buildings that we have right now. Our consultant database is another area that we're working on. Site consultants are those individuals hired to locate projects throughout the nation. Just last week, we saw a report that one of our databases that we use had 445,000 unique visitors in one day. So there's activity, and we have to make sure that we're telling our story, so we're in the game. So again, just working to build out those site consultant databases specifically knowing what they work with, whether it be food processing, manufacturing, or other sectors that we need to be engaged with. We have seen several leads from the state of Iowa and Iowa Area Development Group, one specifically for green industrial site. We're really working through that process to see if that will be a good site for it or if we can put together alternative sites when we have a little bit more information. And finally, on the attraction side is the retail conversation. In partnership with SEDC and the Mayor's Council, there's a lot of activity going on. Again, a number of those are retail that really fit within the demographic of the community as well as fill in some of those gaps with our analysis. So we did, we are working with the Retail Coach for new data. I know that the city of Spencer had worked with Buxton in the past as a retail recruitment firm. That's not where we're headed with it. Retail Coach is a competing company, but right now, we just hired them for some current data. What we had from Buxton is in that 2015 timeframe, and conditions are a lot different. The data's a lot different, and so along with that data to study our market, we also collect the information from Iowa State University that tells us about our pull factor, our markets, how we compete with peer communities so that we can make a case for retail here in Spencer. I'm trying to be very aware of your time. It's not so beautiful outside tonight. So bear with me. I'm trying to get through quickly. The next area that nobody can be surprised with is workforce. When we're out doing these existing industry visits, that's the number one thing that we're hearing about right now is the challenges with workforce. So while we don't have an answer, I feel like we can't just talk about workforce. We need to start to break it down. Ron Cox was out here in December and really talked about the 27 different components that make up a workforce, from those nearing retirement, high school, those that are part-time, looking for different types of things. So we have started meeting with the Chamber Workforce Development, the Community College, on a pretty regular basis. We'll be meeting again Thursday, but we really want to build out our programming. We feel like there's a whole lot of pieces. It's that talent pipeline, working within our schools. It's reemployment for those that are unemployed. It's upskilling those that are capable of doing more than they currently are doing. And then it is recruitment of new people. That includes some diversity as well. So we are updating the labor shed with Iowa Workforce Development. We're hoping that's available this summer. That'll give some good industry conditions, wages, those types of things, commuting patterns, too. Moving into, I guess I should have noted, in the existing industry, we do have a supply chain event coming up in March, putting that together with Iowa State University. We're gonna be talking about Manufacturing 4.0 as well as managing supply chain in times of chaos. What we really like about the approach with this is that it's not just a bunch of speakers and you go home with a pile of paperwork, but they will come in and do individualized consulting with our industries if they want to take a look at supply chain and analyze that or do an initial analysis for any components of Industry 4.0. So that will be coming up on March 22nd as well. And then into the entrepreneurship piece, we are continuing, we're moving forward with the Startup Skillet Program. That was pre-me, but it was really a series of videos for business startups to work through all the different process pieces and modules of the startup process. So those will be videos that are online, available in both English and Spanish through a partnership with University University so that we're really accommodating those looking for education without them having to come into our office. Many looking at businesses are not located in the area or they have other employment, so we're trying to do that to accommodate their timeframes. Size Up for Small Business is another tool that the corridor is investing in. That training will be happening this Wednesday with public rollout next week. What it is is a market research and intelligence tool. It pulls data from a number of different sites. I'm gonna pick on Donovan a little bit. If Donovan wants to come into Spencer and open a pizza restaurant, he can put that in by NAICS code, put in his market. It's gonna give him information on hourly wages. He's gonna see his competition, his suppliers, a lot of demographic information. So again, it's a way that those outside of our region can get a really good snapshot of what it looks like to do business here and hopefully answer some of those questions and avoid some of those challenges once they get started. Again, I mentioned projects. There are a good number of building searches underway, industrial inquiry, and again, the retail projects we're working on with SEDC. We are currently updating our reports and data such as the economic overview for Clay County as well as the four county region, and working on some legislative priorities. I have talked with Dan a little bit about the sales tax component of the tax bill and different things. So we're really trying to track a lot of things. I think the legislature will continue to invest in housing and childcare, broadband workforce, but we want to keep a good eye on those tools, too, that we need because sometimes they are scrutinized down in the legislature. Finally, communication. We look to be out more on a quarterly rotation, but on the even months of the year, we're gonna have county-specific newsletters that go out to our elected partners and board members. We want to make sure that we're giving you a little bit more specific information than we typically are providing in these meetings. So we'll get started with that. It'll include announcements and things that we're doing, some program information and those types of things. So again, a whole lot going on, really focused again on workforce and some of those pieces that benefit existing industry as our team, too, finds our stride as a new team in the corridor. So any questions, though, on any of those pieces that we covered? I know it's a whole lot to do so quickly, but...
Anybody have any questions for Shannon?
All right.
Shannon, maybe you could touch on, we talked about, you talked about attraction and maybe kind of what the corridor has brought specifically to Spencer, say, in the last two years?
Kind of a challenge. I just came in July, and so we can certainly put that together. I would say a lot of the effort really was around COVID, COVID programming and recovery. I can't speak to any specific projects that I've been made aware of in terms of the recruitment, but I can certainly look into that and follow up with the team and get back to you.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Yep. Shannon, one thing, what I think you and every business in probably America is concerned about is workforce. And once you find the answer, let us all know, okay? That would be just absolutely awesome. But more seriously, though, I appreciate the fact that you're going to be having newsletters that are county-specific, and I think that's what we need to hear for our constituents is what does the corridor do for the citizens of Spencer primarily? So I appreciate that.
Right, absolutely.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, of course, and I typically would stay, but with the weather, I think I'm gonna get headed home, so.
We don't blame you.
Yes, thanks for taking me.
Shannon, one quick. Wouldn't you think that survey would be out on the retail and the traffic into Spencer, in and out of Spencer?
The retail trade analysis. Typically, ISU would have those out in usually April, following the last calendar year. The most current they have is 2019. I do know they are going through a software update. Back in October, we were working with a retail project, and they kept saying soon, soon. So I wish I could tell you, it's way behind, but the 2019 data is strong. I'm excited to see how that transitioned into 20 and 21, but yeah, unfortunately, I can't say for sure.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item four, the consent agenda. 4A is a motion to approve city council minutes of February 7, 2022. B, licenses, approved classy liquor license, class C beer permit, class B wine permit and Sunday sales for Hy-Vee store and class C beer permit with Sunday sales for Hy-Vee gas, both subject to final approval by Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion setting a public hearing for a city of Spencer budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023 for proposed property tax levy, hearing date March 7, 2022, council chambers, Spencer City Hall. D is a motion to approve residential tax abatement application for Jason and Sandra Warren, 2114 20th Avenue West, subject to review by the Clay County Assessor. E is a resolution adopting final assessment schedule for nuisance abatement and confirming and levying the assessments. These are for mowing. F is a motion to approve an agreement with Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission for shield safety program for fiscal year 2023. That concludes the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Donovan, second. Lauren, please vote by machine.
Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay, item five, under new business. Item A is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2022 ADA upgrades project with Corey Jurgens Construction LLC for $29,526.
I'll make the motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
5B is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2022 wastewater treatment plant driveway replacement project with Delos Construction, Inc. for $451,350. Motion made by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item C is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2022 HMA overlay project with Black Top Service Company for $275,963.80.
So move.
Moved by Ron, second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item D is a motion to approve Spencer Economic Development Corporation, SEDC, request for $100,000 to continue project funding from Economic Development Reserve as recommended by the Finance Committee.
So move.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Lauren. And before we go to discussion, I've asked Dan if he would go into this a little bit, what this $100,000 request from SEDC is for.
This project started before I got here, but SEDC essentially bought several properties on Fourth Avenue Southeast that were in kind of in disrepair, and as they bought, they bought the properties that they targeted, a couple of adjacent properties became available, and so they bought those, too. And essentially, this part of the project, increase in project cost was because of the new properties and some of the, and some of the costs of the ultimate development that could happen there. There are some terrain issues, street issues, flood plain issues and some other issues. Essentially, that's what this money is for. I've talked with the engineer. They've got some kind of back-of-the-envelope ideas that we might be able to develop it without a lot of that, to bypass a lot of that terrain by developing the top side first. But as we get going and we get to finish the purchase of those two remaining properties and get that cleared out, we have also put together an RFP on development. We're gonna send out to developers in this area and outside of this area to get some of the ideas that they basically, developers might have to develop this property. So we're working on getting this ready to develop and to market it and get it developed and try to get this money back into the tax rolls as quickly as possible. But we have to purchase them and level them and get the RFP out first. So that's essentially what this project's all about.
Thank you, Dan. We do have a first and a second, don't we? Yeah, any discussion or any questions for Dan on this? And the Finance Committee has looked at this. If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed nay, motion carries. Item E is a motion to approve the Clay County Fair and Event Center request for $37,000 to cover the final cost of the Zach Williams concert held December 5, 2021, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Dan, I understand this went on where they lost it on this winter, but in the future, I would like to have those concerts brought to us before we decide. Because the whole objective about giving money to the fair at the time was to bring other, or headliners in and stuff. I don't want to have this same thing happen coming after the fact that they didn't make any money. Should have been put into a request before this here situation. So I know we put the money in there, and I agree that it was designed for that, but I'd like to see it at least come forward before, so the city can get recognition for bringing in somebody than just saying that we were covering expenses, so. I'll certainly pass that along to Jeremy, and I'm sure that's a very possible thing he can do, so. I'll let him know.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I would, I agree with Ron. I think it was an excellent point. I think Jeremy kind of mimicked that as well. And Brian, maybe just kind of refresh me. I believe I have an understanding, but these funds have been budgeted and we're in CIP and so, and for kind of various ways to promote different events at the event center. And this isn't necessarily money we're creating out of nothing. It was in CIP for this purpose to some degree. Yep.
Nope, we had it in the budget for this.
Wonderful. Thanks.
And it's, it had to come from hotel motel tax, receipts.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian and Brian. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item F is a motion to approve a three-year agreement with Samsara Sourcewell Contract for a total of $10,928.22 for solid waste division GPS tracking equipment and software for seven trucks. This would come from the operating budget.
I'll make the motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Lauren.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. And before we go to discussion, I'd like Mark White to come up to the mic and just talk a little bit about what this new acquisition is.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening. We've done some extensive research and looked into the GPS tracking on this equipment for quite a while. One of the things it'll do is help us improve the efficiency of the routes if we see some backtracking maybe on the commercial routes and how to improve that. Also for liability, if there's a hard braking situation, it'll film that if there was an accident of some sort and just improved efficiency. Also, maybe like, oh, somebody had to trash out. Well, you didn't go by. Well, yes, we did go by at this time, and it's just kind of the wave of the future to managing fleets. We looked into it for more trucks, but we thought this would be the best way to start. So the first year is 37.0674, so there's, the hardware does not cost anything, but there's some freight involved with that. And then for the following years, 36.10, and it boils down to about $43 per truck per month is what it basically works out to.
Okay, any questions for Mark on this?
Just one comment or a question. Hey, Mark, do you see this as being maybe a test bed that you could use for potentially, like for your plow trucks and other vehicles of that nature?
Absolutely. You know, as been mentioned before, you know, the DOT uses this type of technology. Maybe something we could link up and folks could see that, monitor those conditions. I think it's also important with trucks on the road, it's just a different world. And as much as anything, it protects us in a liability situation. But yes, I do, Lauren. I think you'll see more of this into the future.
Great idea.
Just peace of mind, that's the same company we use for our fleet trucks and very easy to operate, very easy to use. And it does even down the road can go on to other pieces of equipment besides just plugging into trucks. It'll do scissor lifts, it'll do trailers.
Excellent.
It can branch out farther, so it's a good company. They actually, since they started, have... have continued to improve their, their stuff compared to a lot of them out there. So good to see that, that company here.
Excellent. And I'm glad for the endorsement. And it'll also interface with the existing cameras that are on the garbage trucks as well. So we can pick up from the rear cameras. And so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item G is a motion to approve a quote from Fisher Brothers for restoration of the side decking and stairs at Spencer Family Aquatic Center for $46,200 as recommended by the Finance Committee. Motion made by Tracy.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. And Jared is here tonight. And there, this is a little, little different in terms of the scheduling for this. So I'd like Jared to speak to that.
Yeah. So we, we talked a little bit about this at the Finance Committee. We had planned to have this company come in and do this before we open this spring. But due to staffing issues, COVID issues, and material, you know, lag times, they're confident they can get it done in the fall. So we decided to kind of get on their schedule and move forward with that. In the meantime, we're working with Iowa Department of Public Health to take some proactive measures to make, you know, daily monitoring, weekly inspections on, on that slide. So we don't have any issues in those soft spots that get worse. And so we can kind of keep an eye on that. But this quote is for completion in the fall after the season. So, and this would be a total restoration of the fiberglass flooring and stairs there. That company would take that apart, take it all back to their shop, restore it to new condition, and then add a layer of what's called life floor. It's kind of a, just kind of a spongy material. It's adds a little bit more fall protection, slip resistant. It's UV resistant and chemical resistant. So it'll make that flooring last that much longer underneath. So that floor has currently lasted 25 years with this added addition, added product. It'll make it last that much longer. So we're looking to, to renovate that entire slide structure, flooring and decking. So.
Okay. Any, any questions for Jared on this?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones.
Yep.
Jared, on, so the, the fix wouldn't be until fall.
Correct. Yep.
So during the summer months, when you got traffic, how frequently do you plan on, is it just going to be a daily, I assume?
Yep. So staff's going to do it daily. And then Iowa Department of Public Health, Tamey McKeever is going to come out weekly and monitor and make sure, and record that that, those soft spots haven't gotten any worse, weren't seeing any major breakthroughs. The, the companies I've talked to, that's not going to fail. Like, nobody's going to fall through. It's just going to start cracking and could potentially, you know, cut a foot or something like that. So no, no major, major concerns. But it's, it's something that we want to do proactively to, to make sure it's safe and nobody does cut their foot or anything like that.
When you gave us that tour last fall, I believe it was, some of those were quite
Yeah. And so I've talked to-
Could you do a, kind of an interim fix?
Yeah. So we've talked to those, that company too. And, and what they've suggested is, and what we've looked at is, there's like commercial pool mats that are slatted that we can put something underneath and then put those on top. It's kind of like, you know, thick rubber mesh, but they got yellow striped outline. So it doesn't create a trip hazard. They're beveled. But then you put something underneath that to distribute the weight. And then you lay that mat on top and it's non-slip, non-skid, that sort of stuff. So in the interim, we're going to do some of those things. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Lauren. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. All in favor of approving this quote from Fisher Brothers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item H is a motion to approve proposal from EDA, Inc. for library HVAC improvements, Phase Two, which includes retro commissioning and balancing of the HVAC system.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Is, is this balancing the, the, the new ones that we put in? Or is this the old system matching to the new, new programs? Or I don't see anybody here. So it's probably-
I, I think the answer to that is, Mark, you're, out in the, you may have something to do with this.
This was-
Or maybe Brian?
This was all stemming from that HVAC study we had them do on the whole system.
Right.
So it was independent. I mean, they gave us a list of 15 items to do. And this was kind of the recommended second phase. As, you know, we did the, what we did or currently finishing up was the most important, getting, you know, the duct cleaning and going through the, I can't even remember what all was part of it. I know is the duct cleaning and the boiler sensors and then the controls, which were kind of outside of this project. And this was kind of the second phase is what are retro commissioning and then balancing it. So they're going to look at the system and, yeah. And this is for EDA to oversee it and monitoring, make sure the reports and stuff are coming back. This isn't, unlike the last one, which was equipment specific, this is more testing and, you know, hiring out of, I don't want to say consultants, but HVAC people, they do the testing and the, the work of this. And then EDA kind of over, oversees it and reviews it, make sure that it's falling within specs, et cetera. So while the agreement is 8,000 for them, you know, you'll see their, the total budget, a little higher than what they had proposed. It was, and we have the 19-1 in the budget. They're thinking it may go up a little bit more. I think 29 is what their estimated current total is now, just based on the market.
Okay. And this is coming out of the CIP?
CIP of, yeah, library reserves.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. So is there, all in favor of the proposal for EDA, Inc. for the HVAC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item I is a motion to approve the agreement with Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission for $4,500 for preparation of environmental impact statement as part of the CDBG application for the 2023 East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
I think we can wait till the next one and then we'll get it all.
I think you're right. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item J is a motion to approve facility plan as prepared by Cruz, Kate, and Nelson PC as part of the CDBG application process for 2023 East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian.
Second.
Second by Tracy. And before discussion, I think Ross, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about what this project is going to entail? And it's not going to take place next week.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'll give you a brief overview. And Brian has pulled up a, a drawing of the project area. So the facility plan is for the 2023 East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project. The facility plan is created and if approved tonight, will be submitted to the Iowa DNR for approval, which is required to submit the Community Development Block Grant Application. Facility plan provides general information about the project area, the existing sewers, and also the proposed improvements. There's a few things I want to talk briefly about, major components, funding, and then the schedule. So if you turn to the drawing, the major components, you'll see two phases on the drawing. Phase one is the one we'll focus mainly on tonight, is, is the major project area. And Phase two was included for, for future, as a future phase, and could also be used if there's additional grant funding that we need to use up. So, so Phase one can generally be described as the area between East Third Street in, in the main railroad track, and also between Fourth Avenue East and 10th Avenue East. Some of the major components of that, of that area and the construction project will be street paving, full width street paving on East Fourth Street from Fifth Avenue to 10th Avenue East, and on Sixth Avenue East from East Third Street to East Fourth Street. Underground utility components will include storm sewer, which is shown as the yellow line on the drawing. New storm sewer mains or laterals will be constructed on East Fourth Street, East Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue East, Sixth Avenue East, Eighth Avenue East, and also 10th Avenue East. And other underground utilities will include sanitary sewer replacement or repairs in the full width street construction areas, and also water main construction in those areas. In the full street reconstruction areas, we'll be doing sidewalk replacement that's non-compliant, or also sidewalk infill where there is none, and also the sidewalk ramps at the intersections. Next, next is the funding portion of it. The city has acquired a DOT swap grant in the amount of $453,000. And with that DOT grant, it's going to require a DOT bid letting. So, so that, that grant applies for the East Fourth Street pavements from Fifth Avenue, Fifth Avenue to 10th Avenue, and also the sidewalk ramp replacements. With this facility plan, we'll also be applying for a CDBG grant for $600,000. And with this, with our, with our early scheduling here, if, we're going to apply for the grant in April. And if it's not received, we'll also be able to apply again in July. The rest of the funding, the water main will be paid for by Spencer Municipal Utilities. And the city will pick up the rest of the tab from what's left between the grants and SMUs portion. So as far as schedule, we're currently working on the Sixth Avenue East right away. Sixth Avenue East between Third and Fourth Avenue East is very narrow. So we'll be looking to require some additional right of way in that area. And I believe that's been discussed. And as far as construction plans, we'll need to submit 60% construction plans in the CDBG application by the end of April this year. And final plans and construction permits will be the end of July this year. And those will be submitted to the DOT for approval. We're looking at a DOT bid letting for the winter of 2022, 2023. And then construction season will be 2023. And it'll likely take, you know, two to three months to construct this project. Fairly extensive. So that's kind of a brief overview. I don't know if you guys have any more questions about it, or?
I know we've been having pretty good luck on the CDBG grants.
Yep.
You know, do you feel that this is a strong?
So, so I, I think, I think what the, we have had a lot of luck with the CDBG grants. In fact, I believe there's been four major projects since 2009 that have all included grants from CDBG funds. Evidently, there was not funds awarded in January, or maybe the applications weren't submitted. And so, so, so in April, there's going to be extra projects submitted, I'm guessing. But, but we do feel that we have a pretty good chance between the April and July applications. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Ross on this? Yeah. Thank you very much, Ross, for your report. Seeing no more comments, all in favor of the, approving the facility plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item K is a motion to approve the 2022 Recreation Program Services Contract with Spencer Family YMCA to provide adult recreational activities in city parks. Motion made by Brian.
I'll second.
Second by Donovan. And before we have discussion, Jared, do you want to talk a little bit about this? This is kind of a new project for us and a new partnership with the Y. Not that we haven't partnered with the Y before, but-
Yeah, this is in just, just a different capacity. So we're trying to, you know, it's been talked about for a couple of years here on trying to expand our programming within the department. Well, we don't have a, a full-time, you know, program director like a lot of cities do. So, and the Y offers some great programming. So it just made sense for us to partner with them to have, to assist us with programming in our parks and getting those out there and getting different activities out within the, our park system. And so we've kind of worked together. We've identified several different programmings, programs, including sand volleyball, which is, has been going on for quite some time already. Pickleball league, tennis league, three-on-three basketball, and, and a bags league as well. So partnering with them, they're going to take registration fees, set up schedules, be on site if need be. We're going to split equipment costs, all equipment that we need to purchase. We will split the cost with them for that. And then we will retain ownership of those. And then split the registration fees as well. And so we will give the Y additional $500 for their extra staff time and coordinating and setting schedules and doing some of that stuff on top of that agreement. But it's a really good agreement, a really good partnership for us. And we're looking forward to having some new programming in, in the city parks. So.
Okay. Any questions for Jared?
So Jared, our cost is 500 to implement this program or?
Yep. Yep. And then some material costs we'll have to buy.
Right.
A few things. But, and then we split registrations right down the middle. So.
Yeah. It's nice to see a few of those leagues and hopefully expand on them.
Absolutely.
You bet.
Yeah. Jared, I just really want to compliment you. I think this is a-
Thank you.
A very proactive step and a positive one. And I encourage anyone out there to look into it. Because I think, you know, with the approval of the, of the tennis courts and the ability to use that as a pickleball court, we're going to have a great facility there. And we already have so many other great facilities. So I appreciate you and the Y working together and bringing this together for us.
Yeah. Thank you.
And, and bags tournaments.
Yep.
Who can, who can not resist a bags league? Yeah. So should be fun. Thanks, Jared.
Yep. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of approving the Recreation Program Services Contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item L is a motion to approve real estate contract with the estate of Kim Marie Driftmeyer for $275,000 for property at 2979 River Road, Gretinger, Iowa, adjacent to the landfill. Motion made by Lauren.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. And Mark White, if you could come to the mic and explain to the public what this purchase is all about and why we need it and so forth.
Certainly. Brian, you can pull up a map or not. He's working on it. There's 8.75 acres that are in the northeast corner of the landfill, currently owned by the City of Spencer. The original footprint was a, was 160 acres. And then there was a kind of a notch out of it that goes with that pond area with this property. The city then came later and bought the property on the east side of the landfill. And this connects with it. So it's contiguous with our landfill footprint or campus. What does allow us for is not for future cell expansion, but to be able to protect future cell, cell expansion. What we would do with the property is remove the buildings, offer the dwelling for a sealed bid, and then enter into an agreement with Palo Alto County Conservation to manage this as public land as they already do with the current CRP acres that are on the east side of the landfill. We feel it's a way to secure the future and allowing us, like, like already said once, repeated expansion. When there's a dwelling, it changes the regulations of the landfill rules.
Okay. I, I should point out too, that we did talk about this in committee before the council meeting. And so a lot of the questions, I think, by the council were probably handled at that time. But does anybody at this time have any other, any further questions for Mark on this?
Not really a question, Mayor, but just a comment and a compliment, Mark, to you and your group. Mark, to you and your group, that's an important part of our of our, one of our city assets. And for that, for those people to come to you out of the box to to talk to you about that property says a lot about the the neighborly getting along situation. So I think that's a hats off to you and your guys for doing it and seeing this thing coming and looking out in the future for it, so.
Thank you, Lauren, I appreciate that. We've always, you know, had our eyes on expansion. We we keep reserve funds just for things like this. If an opportunity should arise, then it seems it works pretty seamless, but thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I think that's an important point too, Mark, is that this is coming out of reserve funds, the landfill reserve funds, so. Yeah, yeah, good work.
Very good, thank you, folks.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of approving the real estate contract with the estate of Kim Marie Driftmeyer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Item six, engineers' report, Ross?
I just give a quick rundown on some of the projects we're working on that you may see coming to your attention in the next month or so. One of them is the water quality project that we've kind of been waiting a little bit for some DNR approval on. And that 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 project's up by the North Mall in the QRS drainage areas. We'll be trying to do some improvements up there and creating some retention to take away some of that pressure and some of those big storms in those lower areas, so. The other one is the Fairview Tennis Courts. Be replacing the surface on that with Jared and the Park Department. Third project will be the Twenty Fifth Street Southwest Sewer Extension. We're currently working on preliminary assessments for that project to see if that's something we want to move forward with. We have also heard from Corey Jergens Construction about the Drainage Ditch Cleaning Project, Northwest and Menards. I think he's planning to get started on that in the next two or three weeks with the tree removal and some of the excavation while the frost is still in the ground, so. That's all I got for now, okay.
One question, Ross. You mentioned or you highlight a little bit on Twenty Fifth Street Southwest. On the, where where are we exactly on getting those assessments and moving that project forward?
So that's that's what we're currently working on, currently working on the preliminary assessment schedule. And we'll have to bring that to the council and that'll have to move forward with public notices. And then we'll have to have a public hearing to see if if there's objection or not.
Right.
But on whether or not the project moves forward.
Right, but what timeframe are you looking at having that ready to the council? Do you figure it's gonna be in March or April?
Yeah, you'll see it in March, the preliminary assessments, so.
Okay.
We'll have to set a set a hearing and it might not be at the next council meeting, but the next one for sure.
All right.
Could be, could be.
Yeah, kinda wanted to know that, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ross? Okay, thank you very much, Ross.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, item seven, city managers' report, Dan?
Got a few things going on, of course, we're working on budget, that's taking up most of the time. Also working on a a couple of potential economic development projects, doing some groundwork on those. And on Thursday of this week, I'm gonna be attending the Northwest Iowa City Managers Regional Meeting in Sheldon. So get together and talk shop with other city managers from Northwest Iowa.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Under the mayor's report, just a couple of things. There's an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Longtime member Craig Wampler has had to step down and so there is an opening. So anybody who would have an interest in that can contact me or can contact City Hall. Secondly, the second mayor's update will be happening this Thursday at twelve thirty. It'll be livestreamed. And we we were going to have a a guest, Brian Moore, our golf course superintendent, was going to be here, but he decided that going to a turf management conference was more important than being at the mayor's update, so. So tomorrow, when I go to the department head meeting, I'll be looking for volunteers. So we'll we'll see who steps forward. Okay, that's all I've got under the mayor's report, counseling committee reports.
Got a few things going on, like speaking of budget, we're have a committee of the whole on Wednesday at five thirty to go over the entire budget that we presented to the finance committee last week. And now the 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 whole thing will be presented at this committee, the whole meeting on Wednesday. And then we have the regular city council meeting on the seventh of March.
Okay. Okay, item ten, I'd entertain a motion to approve bills and claims.
I'll make that one.
Motion made by Brian. Second by Tracy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
One second, Mayor.
Oh, discussion?
No, I have two additions. I didn't get the little report printed off as I was cleaning off my desk today. I noticed two that were, should have been paid last month. One is to S or Jobs Trust for a Quality Housing Grant for Grant Number ninety eight in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred. And then one to Spencer Rotary for the city managers' quarterly dues in two oh seven. So those I would like to request you add to the claims list you were given Friday.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Thank you, Brian, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, item eleven, any other business opportunity to address the council? I see Jared coming before the council and Mike Harlemann.
Yep, so we have a representative from MWI, I'll let her introduce herself, but they're looking to support our efforts out at Staley, so we appreciate that. And yeah, let's just kind of introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody, I'm Shannon Clark with MWI Components. If you don't know me, I'm the marketing coordinator over there. I'm just here to present a check to the city of Spencer and to the Parks Department. I know that you guys are working on expanding your trails and everything. MWI just wanted to support that, so we're donating a thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the parks and rec and the trail project, we are giving you a challenge point.
This is pretty cool, he did show it to me beforehand. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shannon, and thank you, Mike, and thank you, Jared.
Yeah, we just want to thank everybody for their continued support on this project and and our trail system. It's been a huge success and and Mike and Bob have done a great job at it. And we've gotten quite a bit accomplished and still more yet to do, but we we thank everybody for their support, so. Thank you.
I think I'd echo that from Jared. I think Mike and Bob have have steamrolled this thing and kept it moving, because a lot of times these things slow down, but not with those two, so thank you very much.
That's for sure, that's for sure, thank you, guys. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Lauren, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion adj, meeting adjourned.
Bob was probably here to kick me out of Rotary for not paying my.
I know, I know.
That's how trouble starts.
That's where it all begins when you don't pay.
I thought that was Shannon.